Call a meeting to work. You would please raise your hand.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this time we will open the public hearing for the Okra water project.
So, good evening, council and public. Mike Klein Peter, Klein Peter Consulting Group, where the grant administration firm helping the town apply for an Okra grant. This is going to be similar to the presentation we did last time, except that one was for the state revolving loan fund, required public hearing. This is for the Okra grant. The purpose of this hearing is to discuss our application for grant funding through the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We are applying specifically for a water grant in the amount of $700,000, and we will be contributing $2,157,081 as local matching funds. That was 2157081. This will consist up of $66,000 in water operating funds and the state revolving loan fund in the amount of $2,091,81. That's 2091081. The Okra grant is a multi-step process. We first have to do the public hearing tonight. We'll then submit a proposal on April 26th. In May, Okra will come out and do a site visit. They'll meet with Alan, Chris, and Julie and talk about the project. And then we'll have a second public hearing in June and submit our application on June 28th. Award announcements will be August 26th. The Okra grants are competitive. They score and rank them from highest to lowest in scoring and then fund until they run out of money. So you don't know how high you have to score. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Savka to talk a little bit about the water projects.
Well, as you know, this has been months in the works. Started off with a water master plan and there was a committee formed and we studied the water situation, among other things. But a water project has been deemed to be the priority here. And there is a exhibit that's leaning up against the wall, which kind of lays out specifically what's going to happen. But we've got some water main replacements in several locations. And on that drawing there shows where those lines are. But it's Perry Street from North Main to Market, Perry Street from Harrison to High, South Perry Street from Main to Factory, Walnut from Pearl to Sycamore and up Sycamore, Pearl Street from Main to Harrison, Harrison from Pearl to Main, and Washington Street from Harrison to Dalton. We also have a line loop on the north side in the project and replacing the two water booster stations among some new valving and some new hydrants in the system. So that's, in a nutshell, what the project is at this point in time. And of course, the pertance is on the main replacement. You've got your valves and hydrants and reconnecting the water services to those.
Any public comment regarding this water project?
So, in 2018, we replaced the water line on Main Street. And that's a project that was 100% funded by us as a town. And at that time, they identified South Perry Street as probably in as bad, if not worse, shape than what Main Street was. And it was highly recommended to us at that time to get some work done on South Perry Street. In addition to that, we have a number of water leaks on Walnut Street. And so, we have attempted twice now to get grants for South Perry and Walnut Street. And then we got this planning grant last year. And through the planning grant, we found that there were other deficiencies in our system. And so, if we're able to get this grant, it would just really be a blessing to our water. It's really improve the quality, the blessing of the lakes, all of that.
Yep, I'm Rick Cole, Fire Chief here. I support this project. When we go look to a water main or a water hydrant, we want to make sure we have good water flow and good water mains if we have to fight a fire. I know some of our water lines are really aging. So, I support this 100% for the protection of the residents and the town.
Yes, sir.
I'm Robert Warner. I was the town manager prior to Chris Lamar. And I support this project. I know when I was town manager, we had a number of issues with the booster stations. So we had to go in there and continuously, you know, upgrade those, spend money on them to improve them. We also had numerous water leaks. We averaged over a water leak a month somewhere around town. So, this project, it definitely is needed by the town.
I will say, from the council's perspective, that we've put a lot of time and effort into organizing this. We've made sure that, you know, the steps have been followed. And we've worked closely with our water department. And, you know, there's sufficient feeling that this is what we need at this time. Any further public comments?
Jeff Plaster, I'm the Wayne County Commissioner representing this District Three. Just would encourage you, I understand that it's a necessary project. It's always a good thing to reach out to the state. Okra's mission is to support rural Indiana and helping us fund projects like this. So applaud your initiative in applying and sticking with it. And hopefully, this time around, you'll get some funding.
Any other comments? Seeing now, this time we will close the public hearing. We'll move on to regular business. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes for the March 4th council meeting and March 18th public hearing and special meeting?
Please refer.
Second.
So properly moved in second, that we approve the minutes for the March 4th council meeting, March 18th public hearing, special meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Today, we have with us a visitor for Forward Wayne County.
Hello, my name is Pasia St. John with Forward Wayne County, which is the community leadership arm of the Wayne County Foundation. I recognize some of you from our past experience coming to the county, but I thank you for your time tonight. I'm here tonight to talk about Stellar Pathways, which is an additional program out of Okra. Chris, were you able to forward all the information to the council members?
I am not, I am not fit for that.
Okay, all right. So, we had a meeting last week with communities that were potentially interested in participating in Stellar Pathways. So, the first requirement is that we had to attend a workshop session. There was a delegation from Wayne County that went to that. And then we had to have a meeting with potential communities that were interested. It wasn't a commitment or anything, but just say, hey, were you interested? So we did have, Chris from Hagerstown did come to our meeting to talk about what the potential was, what does it look like, and whether Hagerstown town would be interested in participating. So that's why I'm here tonight. The next step was to get on some agendas, to have the discussion. So Stellar Pathway is the newest version of Stellar that has come out of Okra. And it is designed to build capacity, to engage community members, and really to help towns develop strategies that will be transformative for quality of place and community vitality. The benefits, it's a very short timeline, I will just say that. But the benefits to these communities are actually that. There are, I think, eight, yes, there are eight funding streams that come along with Stellar Pathways. It's an $8 million program. Four of that is coming from Okra. And then we have several other state agencies that are involved. So Indiana Destination Development Corporation, Indiana Department of Health, IDH CBA, the Community Development Helping Authority. So there are things, INDOT is involved in this. And so, there are lots of different funding streams that are coming through that. Of the participation statewide, 32 counties were represented. We anticipate probably half or more will apply. Okra will select four finalists, and then they will designate two of them. So there will be two communities that will be designated as Stellar Pathways. What we are asking in Hagerstown tonight is this. One, we want to engage your interest. We'd actually like you to participate, I'll just kind of come out and say that. In this round, so when we came a couple of years ago, we were talking about the Help program. And at that time, there was a funding commitment that came out of the American Rescue Plan dollars. And at that time, Hagerstown decided not to stay for a variety of reasons. This round with Stellar Pathways, there's no financial commitment. The commitment is that you are wanting to participate in the planning process should we be selected as finalists. Your community has to commit prior to May 1st. So we have to submit a letter of intent to Okra by May 1st. So that includes a couple of things. One, it would include minutes that you are permitting that, hey, you want to participate. It would include a resolution that has to be signed by each of your individuals here. The resolution is very basic. We will, Chris will send all that information to you. But what we're asking tonight is that if we're selected as a finalist, and here's the catch, we will know by June, we will know by June whether or not we'll be a finalist. If we're not selected, no harm, no foul. However, in the long-term process, should we not be selected, the county does want to start spearheading a county-wide comprehensive plan to really invest into our individual communities and how that looks for down the road as a collective. So, no harm, no foul for not selected, but there's a long-term strategy. But in the interim, it is about how do we start working together? And we would like for Hagerstown to participate. So tonight, we recognize that there could be a special section if you want to think about it a little bit more. But we have, we're working on a very quick timeline of whether or not Hagerstown wants to participate. And this is true for all community groups. Right now, we have interest from six communities. The counties involved, Sydney, Richmond, East Germantown, Centerville, Economy, and Greensworth, who we're currently having conversations with this month. So that is kind of it in a nutshell. Again, there's no financial commitment at this time, but it is committing to the planning process should we be selected as a finalist. Benefits, again, all those funding streams that could come Hagerstown by depending on, and you're not required to apply for all the funding streams. But really, it is a way to work into whatever your town plans are, that you could apply for some of these funding, should it fit your needs as well. Yes?
So, the information that Chris can get to us, will it detail what the funding streams are, what is available?
Yes, so there is a, I sent three pieces of information. One was the draft resolution, which we will update once we know which communities want to be involved, because you have to have all the communities, and then you have to have the county. So there's a draft resolution. There's the entire FAQs, all the, so it includes all the funding streams, answers to all the questions. And then there is a Stellar Pathway presentation that we forwarded to all the communities that were interested to participate. So you can learn more about it.
No financial commitment now, financial commitment later, if there's awards granted?
There are, so should we be designated as a Stellar Pathway? Within some of the different funding streams, there are match requirements. But no upfront hard commitment in a certain course of the funds. We'll just have to work into the different funding streams, depending if Hagerstown wants to apply for those funds, and how we work the match. But that's something that we are very creative and good at doing.
So if this is granted as a Stellar project and awarded the money, who's manager?
The foundation.
The foundation?
Yes. And we will have a grant administrator that we are...
So once that money arrives, then we would then have to apply again to the foundation to receive a portion of that money?
No.
Or we would know going into that how much money we're going to receive for projects?
What you will do, what we will do is this, because there is a planning process, again, you're committing to the planning. So if we're designated in June that, hey, yes, we're going to be one of the finalists, that starts a less than six-month planning process, whichever community that participates will go through. And you will have key projects that you are wanting to bring forth from Hagerstown. At that time, whoever's designated as your lead from Hagerstown will be part of all of that planning. So then when we start to apply for actual funding, we will know which projects will go into which funding stream, who has to apply for what.
And that would also include what match we have?
Correct, correct.
For clarification, when we talk about the finalists, is that the participating county or the participating communities within the county as a whole, or each individual?
Correct, correct. So we're calling it Stellar Wayne County. So we'll be the communities within the county. Okra has designated that this has to be by region, and by region, maybe county. That doesn't have to make sense to anybody but Okra. But that's what we're looking at. So it's the communities within the county that will have the opportunity. I will also say this, so if a community decides not to participate within the letter of intent, you cannot come into it after the letter of intent, and that's a requirement by Okra.
I'm not going to dance around it.
Sure.
So if the money's awarded to Wayne County and we have a project on the table, we're going to be concerned whether or not the portion, the biggest portion of the money is either going to get funded into Richmond or other areas? And so, how is it equitably going to be divided up?
So within that, yeah, so within this planning process, in every town represented, that's how we will do it. Just like the Help program, as you have probably seen, how it really distributed all those funds across the Wayne County and the investment into each of those communities, not just from the, not just from the Okra dollars, but at the same time, from the, how the county used their American Rescue Plan dollars. So, a lot of those communities saw a great return on their investment. Their 30% ended up being, you know, 150, 200% back into their communities. But it's not just the foundation won't pick and choose, it will be the planning committee, which represented from each of these communities that will make those filings.
And each community will have one representative?
Yes. And so, we were saying this, is that whoever is selected to be on the planning committee needs to be a decision maker for your community. Like, we love volunteers and we think they're great, however, if they're not a decision maker, they're not going to have the interest of your community that, you know, the strategies that need to be invested.
I've got a question.
Yes?
It's, you specify the project, though, when you get into your final application. And so, it's not, they don't pick and choose then at that point. If they're awarded and your project or projects are included in that mass of projects, whatever's been identified as the financing is what's financed, correct?
Or is that money just rolling into the foundation and you determine how much money we get?
No, we do not determine that. The foundation is just the holder of the funds. What we do is we're working with, we will have a grant administrator that will also be working that. And I can't say it officially, but you all familiar with that person? So, I can also let him speak to that just a little bit as well.
So I think you did a great job explaining, and I'm glad you explained it, not me. So, you are going to submit a letter of intent, they're going to narrow it down to four. The state is then going to give a planning grant funds to the four finalists of like $50,000 to work on this plan of, if you're selected, how are you going to spend that $8 million as a community Wayne County? And that's where the representatives, I think, from each of those communities are going to sit down and say, here's the projects that I like, here's what we got, and we're going to have to figure out how to put that together. Once we put that together, Okra's going to require that we give a presentation, the county gives a presentation to them of those four finalists if we're selected. And then they're going to pick two winners from there, based on your presentations and how you would spend the money. So to answer your question about specific funds, the county is definitely going to be in charge and the holder of the funds. It's kind of going to work like Help does, though, where once the county says, hey, Hagerstown's getting $400,000, then we're going to submit an official application for Hagerstown of the Wayne County funds. And the money will end up depositing in Julie's account. So, you know, you're going to go through that process there. And so, if you're a finalist and you make it to the final four, at that point is when you're going to have the decision of, and I'm just throwing out a project, do we want to do a park project for $500,000 and get $300,000 from Okra and put $200,000 with it? Do we want to do a million-dollar project and get $800,000 in grant, put $200,000? That's when I think you'll see those projects start to materialize and, hey, this is what we want to bring forward. Different funding sources have different match requirements.
So when the county presents this, or the organization within the county that's presenting it, are they going to, will there be influences on, all right, Centerville, we'd really like you to do a parks program, but Hagerstown, we want you to do this. Is there going to be influences on that to try to make the grant go through functionally better? If everybody turns in a park program in Wayne County, are we going to look at that as a whole going, you know, this is really not going to have, be able to score high enough to win this? We need to diversify this.
I think that there's a couple of ways we could look at that. One, you would not dictate to any community what projects they can apply. However, again, back to what Mr. Klein Peter said, is that this might be an opportunity to bring something to the forefront that your community has maybe always wanted to do, but because of other, more, you know, necessities, just hasn't brought to light. So it could be where, if everyone wants a park project, I would say that's probably not going to happen.
No, I understand, that's an extreme, but I was...
However, but if, so what you could do is, you could look at it and say, we are going for this. But again, I can't speak for every community, but I imagine that they will look at this and say, you know what? We've always wanted to do X, but because we have limited funds, et cetera, we've got to take care of our sewer first. We've got to take care of our roads first, we've got to do X first. So, I don't think it will be as dramatic as that. Could there be a possibility, I would say a slight percentage? But at the same time, it really is, and I think you'll find in this process and what we've found through Help is that really, when we start looking at it, it kind of by natural selection, some of these other things just kind of fall into place. So, also along with that, so part of our really gift-based planning process, we ask for some information from Hagerstown for town plans, kind of what your current projects are, et cetera, and looking at that. So we have some of that information already. But at the same time, the foundation is working on, how do we, how do we look at the county as a whole? How do we start going after some funding dollars, et cetera? So part of that is all part of this planning. And so, this is just additive to the work that we're starting to do. And then our standard community partners, we have our county commissioners, our county government, local city government, economic development chamber, all the usual suspects are in this.
With the two designated communities, is it $4 million or $8 million that they'll receive? Is it $8 million total, or is it $4 million piece?
$8 million each.
$8 million each.
$8 million each. $4 million of that will be CDVG funds. About that $8 million.
Got you. Thank you.
And in FAQs, it breaks down the dollar amount per agency that make up that $8 million?
Alan, if I could make just a couple of comments?
Here, you're taller than me, go ahead.
I need it back, I need to leave it in the back. Two and a half years ago, we came and talked to you about the Help project. The difference between this and Help, Help had just $1 million of CDVG money available. There were about $10 million of ARPA funds that the county, the city, and each of the towns put into this. The $1 million of CDVG money was split between Cambridge City and Dublin. I think we had a good process of going through a planning process that would lead to each individual town having their own plan, what's important to them. Then the county, the group as a whole, will determine what's in the best interest of the entire county and try to select some projects across the board that would impact every community. But in the totality of it, really put a step, some steps forward for the county as a whole. So that's what we're looking at. I think the, and notes, it's easy to get focused on the dollars, the $8 million potentially that would come to the county to be distributed. But the key here is to have a plan, in my opinion. Have a plan, prioritize that plan, have as many communities as possible participate in that planning process. Have as many people as possible from those communities participate in the planning process. And then, hopefully, we'll get some funding from Okra, from their partners, to start to implement this plan. But just like with Help, the total plan is going to far exceed the money that will be available from Stellar. And this will give us a long-term opportunity to plan how we're going to pay for these other projects that residents, councils are telling us are the most critical projects for their communities and for the county as a whole. So it's a start. We may or may not receive any money from Okra, I guess. But the fact that these projects rise to the level of being prioritized highly is going to be important in going on for other funding streams, whether that's other community development block grant applications, or whether that's INDOT funds available, wherever, whatever the source. It's going to be important to have this planning process in our pockets. And we can work that plan and fund that plan over time. I did ask Mike, and he's talked to folks at Okra, he believes that if your application now is successful, the water application, that we could look at adding to that if we're successful. The CDVG dollars from Stellar could be added to that overall cost. Remember that the nice thing about the CDVG Stellar funds is that we don't have that limitation. So you're applying for $700,000, that's the most you can apply for under the regular CDVG program. There's $4 million that could be set aside, and so we could add to whatever you receive. A project could, might cost, you know, $2 million. And potentially, that full $2 million could be funded with one CDVG grant from Stellar, because they take those caps off. And it's not to say that we would, because if there's six, eight, 10 communities that are participating, I think one of the concerns is going to be, as Donnie mentioned, you know, how are we going to, how are we going to spread those dollars over the participants? And so I think we were very careful to do that with Help, we want to do that with Stellar. I think it's a win-win, I don't think there's a downside here for you. There are some rules, if we're selected, when would you be eligible to apply? If you receive money from CDVG, when would you be eligible to apply again? Depends on how long it takes you to get your project up and running and completed. If you don't receive CDVG dollars out of this, then there is no blackout period. But it's not dramatically different than the regular application process. If you receive this $700,000 you're applying for, you can't turn around next year and apply for another grant, because while you're still working on that one. So, same rules for community development block grants apply. They have to meet a national objective, you know, you have to deal with the low to moderate income issues. So all of those rules still apply, but the cap is removed. So, I would encourage you to give this serious consideration. It's your decision again, if you want to participate, we welcome that. If you don't want to, that's up to you. My goal is to try to get every community to participate. So the overall plan for the county is just that, a county-wide plan that has participation from all corners of the county and that has impact to all corners of the county. So, be happy to answer any questions, everyone.
When will the funding be available?
Early next year. The award will be made then. The funding takes a little bit longer to turn this figured on. You have to apply for a particular project, even though it's not competitive at that point. You still have to go through the application process, and that takes a matter of some months to get the money flowing.
So as part of the time, a strategic investment has to be submitted for November 2024. And then there'll be a presentation, and then the timeline suggests that they will make an announcement on the two designees, January of 2025.
So if, just clarification on that, if this gets awarded and we get this grant, you're telling, you're saying that there's no blackout period for applying for additional Okra grants other place else? They're not going to say, hey, you've already got $200,000 over here?
If, well, for a particular one, if it's a different project.
If it's a different project, we need to apply for streets or something?
There's a blackout period.
There is a blackout period, but this money is pending for...
There always is, any CDVG must.
So for any CDVG grant, once you get a grant awarded, you're in a blackout period until you sign. If it's a construction grant, you've got to sign a construction contract. So if we were to apply for this one in June, get awarded in August?
And let's just say there's a delay in getting the money from the... And let's just say there's a delay in getting the money from the county.
Correct.
This is all gonna extend a blackout period for any other grant?
You're gonna be in a blackout period whether you do this or not. Whether you do this or not, you're gonna be in a blackout period from OCRE from August until you start construction, which would probably be February or March. You're gonna be in a blackout period till March, regardless if you do this process or not. If you do this process, you're still in that blackout period until you sign construction. They're gonna, say you're part of the team, you just can't access the money till you sign that construction contract. Then that opens up the next slot, where if you had a park project through OCRE, you would have to wait till you sign that construction contract and then jump to your park next April or May. You would have to do that regardless, you'd be in that blackout.
For any OCRE grant.
For any OCRE grant, you're in that blackout, no matter what.
But if this particular money comes in and we actually got that, the county got it.
Yes.
And then there's a three-month period of, well, who's getting what, who's getting this, what's gonna happen? If that three-month period, we are not able to apply for any more OCRE grants, why those decisions are going through the system?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, when you do that SIP that you have to submit, so you're, you submit your letter of intent, they narrow it down to four winners, those four winners have to do an, an SIP, a strategic investment plan, that that's gonna be probably September, October, I don't have my timeline in front of me, but September, October, you're gonna be in a blackout no matter what, but that's not gonna matter, you're just putting your projects forward, they gotta be completed over the next four years. So you could say, hey, my project's not gonna be able to start till June, and that's not gonna penalize you from getting something funded, I think, is your concern, of saying, I'm in this blackout, so I can't get funded.
Yeah, if we wanna do another OCRE grant over here, we know we got money coming from the foundation for this, we just haven't received it yet, because we're still figuring out how it's gonna be dispersed.
Yeah.
And now we can't apply for.
Correct, but you couldn't anyway, and in June and December, the application rounds every time. So you'd have to wait until June anyway. I will say, I did check with OCRE about, does this conflict with, if you do this, are you, are you hurting Hagerstown at all? I did ask that specific question.
That's what I'm wondering.
They said, this project, if you go in and get awarded, you're fine to move forward with it, is what they said, and, and if you want to, if this project comes in over budget or something, I think we could potentially ask them for funds out of the HELP bucket, if this is one of the identified projects. But I don't know that they're gonna say, hey, since you're, this is your project, we're gonna increase your grant all the way up to one point five to reduce your match, I just wanna be clear on that. We're gonna get seven hundred thousand for this project, and this project's moving. Now, if we decide to do something else, a water tower or something else, that's a whole different ballgame, because it's not this project. Does that make sense, everybody? I just wanna make sure we're up there, so that way.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that's right, I mean, I don't wanna hear a probably on that. I wanna know, moving forward, if that is the case.
So what would you, what question you want me to answer?
That if this money is awarded.
Okay.
Will it hurt Hagerstown moving forward with any other applications to OCRE while this is in process?
The answer's no to that one, I'm confident in that.
Now that we, let's pretend we win this, right? And now there's ninety days worth of bickering and who's where the money's gonna go and how it's gonna be divided up, which project's getting what, during that period of time, ninety days, we are not eligible to apply for other grants, for OCRE. And you're telling me that's because we're in an automatic blackout period?
So in that September, October timeline, where you guys are going through your strategic investment plan, at that point is when the decisions are gonna get made, that if we're awarded, who's funded and for what project?
Okay.
Because OCRE wants to know, if you give you the award, how you spend your money. And that's the purpose that strategic investment plan for Wayne County is. If you're awarded, we know automatically Hagerstown's getting this money, and Dublin's getting this money, and Cambridge City's getting this money, so it's not that we're waiting till we're awarded to figure out who's gonna get what money.
Okay.
We already know that.
So you know going into this that we need three hundred thousand dollars to paint curbs, whatever.
Right, as long, right, you're gonna know at that SIP.
When that comes in, we're getting the three hundred thousand, it's not a decision that a committee has to make and go, Hagerstown's only gonna get fifty thousand.
Right, when that SIP is submitted, the projects that are in there that get awarded are what's gonna be, if you get awarded, you're gonna give a presentation on, here's why Hagerstown, and I use a new park as this example, here's why Hagerstown needs a new park, I mean, that's one of the things, you're gonna be selling your project to the funding committee on why they should pick you, and then if you're awarded, guess what? You already know you've got your money for your park when you're awarded, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Now, in all of this, though, just like HELP, there's always a great plan, and then you get into it and you find out, hey, project came in under budget, or project, we had some extra funds here, does anybody have a project that could fit this? And we move a little bit, but for the most part, OCRE's gonna be looking at that strategic investment plan, and you're gonna know then, when it's time to commit, that, hey, if we get awarded, we're gonna put our money up for this project. And that won't be during the blackout, so I think you'll be okay.
So that kinda brings up another question I have, if we were awarded NDOT funds to rebuild North Washington Street, then are we still allowed to apply for community crossings grants through NDOT, then I guess it'd be a question.
I got this one here with those, but they didn't mention that, did they?
They, they did not mention that, however, we would still look at the same requirements from each agency and their blackout periods.
Okay.
Right, so it doesn't, it doesn't guarantee you anything, but we just, we would have to look at each individual agency, which the initial plan is, once we know which communities are participating, the foundation is planning to take all of these and kind of put in like a, like a sheet, what, what those requirements are and what the deadlines are, and what it kind of looks like. But until we know which communities are participating, we're not, we're not doing that upfront. But it is, it's also, I would also say that in this process, if you're awarded for this project, if you're applying to this board, if you're awarded for these funds, and then through the planning process, you might say, at this moment, we don't need the CDBG cuts, but we do wanna go after these funds. That's also an option for you. And then guess what, you'll have this blackout period except for the award that you currently have.
So I was the grant administrator in the Health and Heritage Region, and that was Tony Shirley, Greenfield, and Hancock County. And that's what they did, Shirley said, hey, we want project trails, we want a trail project, we'll take some of the trail money. Greenfield said, hey, we'll cover the CDBG money, Fort Bill said, hey, we want a little piece of the CDBG money. So they did a, a main street revitalization, Greenfield did a main street revitalization, and then the county took some of the NDOT, and Fort Bill took some of the NDOT money, so it kinda divided up is how it worked out. So just because you get CDBG money, you're not on an NDOT blackout period. Or just because you got NDOT, you're not on a CDBG blackout. It's just if you take CDBG till your project's done, you're in a blackout for that one project.
Any additional questions? So you said, May first is when we would have to have our deadline?
No, the actual deadline, the annual commitment and resolution signed, et cetera, for every community is April twenty fourth. The foundation has to submit the letter on May first, and that includes all the communities participating, all the, all the wording, everything, the financials, the, just all of the work has to be submitted on May first. So that gives us time to work in the planning process and get everything submitted. So we would have to, we need to just keep on, I'm asking tonight is, does Hagerstown want to proceed? Again, no financial commitment at this time, it's a commitment of time, that you will select someone to represent you if we move forward in the process. And then the second is, I think that Jeff and I, we had a discussion because of the, of what the draft resolution is written, is that, again, in the resolution, and I apologize that we thought that was sent to you already, we will get that to you, but it is, there's, there's no financial anything in there. We do want your, your town attorney to review that, but once we know, then we would need to have that signed also, so that may require a special session. But tonight, what we would like is a vote to see if you want to proceed with us.
I make a motion that we proceed with the Stellar Pathway Grants.
A second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we move forward with the Stellar Pathways grant application process. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Julie, we have a steward credit?
Yes, I sent everyone an email. Um, let's see, oh, two, two, one, five, zero, zero, one. For, it's trying to, last month, the lead they had, they've signed off since, but, six fifty nine thirteen is what they're asking for, six hundred.
I thought we just did a credit last week.
We did.
So this is, so she didn't fix it?
We did, the new ones, the new, the new ones did, but.
So she didn't fix it, but now moving forward, there won't be any more problems in theory, because now it's been fixed?
Yes.
Okay. Do we, does she have any type of deposit debt?
Yes, there's four hundred dollars in the deposit, so her whole bill is one thousand fifty nine thirteen. That's her final bill.
So she came in last month, asked for forgiveness because of an issue.
Yeah.
Didn't fix it, sold it to somebody else, that person fixed it, okay, I just wanna make sure I understood that.
Who they sell to?
Her relatives.
Eltern.
Eltern.
Not her home, yeah.
Yeah, come.
That property's had, that should have fixed it.
Oh, I agree, the owner should have fixed it, probably itself. How many times have we issued, I mean, it seems like there's been many. It might be by many, more than a couple, I believe, is that fairly said?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't feel comfortable at this point offering no credit, at least for me, because there's been so many times that, that they came asking for a credit that they never fixed. I'm glad that the, the new owners fixed it, kudos to them, but, yeah, I'm, I'm against offering a credit in this particular situation, that's just my two cents.
I, I agree with Fred on that. Cause the owner should have fixed it, probably itself, and the new, the person who purchased it should have been aware of it. Should have been made aware, hey, if there's a leak here, you need to fix it soon as possible, just so you know, you're gonna have to pay the bill. That's just my opinion. To me, I think that is something between the new owner and the person who sold the property, so that's not a down issue.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we need to vote a negative down, or do we?
Well, I think it's just a motion, all right?
Oh, no motion, just vote.
Be a motion.
Yeah, I would do, I would do a motion, just to say.
We have to do a motion in a positive, though, right? You can't put a negative motion on the floor, you can't vote not to do something.
Well, not to approve any write-off, you can phrase it that way. I mean, I, I just need something in your minutes to document that you guys, or there was consensus on a decision.
Well, I would move that we go, approve this here credit.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded, we can divide zero credit to account two point two one five zero zero point zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? For Hagerstown?
Uh, not a lot, one, one this month, getting ready for Eclipse, still trying to plan our paint recycling that we're gonna have later this summer, still trying to pick a date on that, I told them I'd try to have a date by next week. And most likely, that'll be late July or August when we do that paint recycling. Other than that.
That went pretty good last year.
Uh, we haven't done a paint, this'll be the first year we've done paint.
Electronic.
Electronics. Yes.
No.
Electronics went well, paper shredding went well. Metal Creek Hardware is gonna fund part of the paint recycling, Wayne County, Wayne Union Recycling will fund the rest of it, they're looking for partners, if there's any funding out there that we want to offer another electronic or another paper shredding event, if they can get funding from town, part of Hagerstown, whoever, they would look at doing something else over here this year. So if that's something you guys wanna consider funding, something towards another recycling event, we can present that to them.
What does that, excuse me, what does that part of shit normally cost?
Uh, on the paint recycling, it's costing Metal Creek five hundred bucks. They're thinking that total event's gonna be twelve hundred to fifteen hundred by the time they pay it, so I'm paying roughly a third of it, all just kinda depends on, you know, what it is.
Is electronic and the paper more or less?
Uh, probably all, probably all right in the same range, you know, they're probably all in that fifteen hundred dollar range by the time they pay the shredding company, recycling, it's not as much, because they're actually gaining something they can resell out of it, you know, with the electronics, they scrap them down.
Uh, regarding Eclipse, I know this has been publicized, but just to make sure it's still out there, the Community Information Center will be down at the meeting place on Main Street, correct?
Correct.
If anybody has questions. Any other questions for Hagerstown? John, do you have anything for us this evening?
So just got an email from Michael about the airport facilities, he said, sorry, I dropped the ball, said I hit save instead of send, said this has been sitting in my drafts, we just need to change the name. The person that's gonna sign off for the Wayne County 4H Association, and then we should have a finalized lease between the airport and the 4H. And then Julie, I don't know if you wanna talk about the, the oxygen situation with the customer at this point? Okay, so Julie reached out to me, I guess just within the last few days, wanted to know about a policy if someone was on oxygen at their home and eligible for disconnection through electric utility, and what ramifications might be there, and looking at your ordinances, you don't have anything specific that addresses that, you don't have to. So there just would be a standard disconnection. Just for sake of comparison, I looked at the regulations for the IURC, and what their member or participating entities would have to do, they have a ten-day window, so if someone gets a disconnect notice, then they have ten days, if, if they get a note from their physician before the disconnection, you have to give them an additional ten days, and then they can do that again one more time, you'd have to give them another ten days. That's what the IURC says, so if they have some other critical medical equipment that they need at their home, powered by electricity, they have that additional time. At the end of the day, everybody has paid the utility bill, so that does come to an end, but that's what th- those folks do. So I don't know if Julie has a recommendation or a thought, or just wants some guidance on from, you know, do you wanna just stick with the standard, they're just a standard customer, no special provisions? Or do you wanna, cause I think the, the person that we're considering is sixty days late?
Yes, yes, I mean, it's not a big bill, but yes, they are.
So, so she just wanted to check on those ramifications and make sure that you guys were aware and see if you wanna make any sort of special provisions in that scenario.
So if I understand you right, John, we only get ten days, right, or, or they, if they don't come in and pay their bill on due date, how, when do you disconnect?
Yes, we are changing the process of that, so right now, we're at the sixty, ninety, and as we keep going through the year, it's gonna be thirty.
So if they don't pay the bill, they get thirty days.
Yeah.
Then if I hear you write, John, if we would add this, whatever everybody else is doing, we, they could get another ten and a ten, so for fifty days is their, if we go down to thirty, then fifty days is their max.
Right, so, yeah, it says, postpone disconnection service for ten days if prior to the disconnect day specified in the notice, the customer provides facility with a medical statement from a licensed physician or public health official stating that disconnection would be a serious and immediate threat to the health or safety of the designated person in the household of the customer. Postponement shall be continued for one additional ten-day period based on provision of an additional such medical statement. So, yeah, if you have a thirty-day stand. So, yeah, if you have a thirty day standard policy, then within that thirty days, they give you a written statement from a physician advising ten days. And then if maybe they get a little closer and they say, well, I just, I need another ten, you either come up with the money or make other arrangements, then you would give them another ten. Now, you don't have to follow this. This is just I U R C, Indian Utility Rating Board Commission. So they're a member entities. This is a policy they would have to follow, so they couldn't vary from this. You can, because you're not a member. So this is just some guidances and comparisons, not necessarily what I'm recommending or you have to.
So the question is, that's a one-time thing, so this month, I don't pay my bill, I get that letter, and then I get another one. Next month, can I do that again?
Don't see any reason that you couldn't, I mean.
That's, that's my concern is, it should be a habitual thing.
You could, we could draft something that said, we can only do this once every calendar year or whatever, so that it doesn't get abused.
I think one thing we would wanna make sure of too, is that we're not allowed to turn them off, is it between December first and March first, if they're receiving?
That's just the ICAP.
If they're receiving ICAP, correct. So we wouldn't want someone getting to, then, then to Thanksgiving and using two ten day extensions and then.
Get a night, not period.
Exactly, cause that would, I could see that happening. So I would say we'd want a, a time period when that could be done and when you can do that somehow.
And basically, we're gonna rely on a medical physician to tell us that this person needs electricity to stay alive. So what I'm going at is oxygen, dialysis, all these other things that, you know.
Yeah, it's phrased, the physician would have to support that it's a serious and immediate threat to the health or safety of a designated person in the household. So that'd be the, doesn't have to be technically your customer or the child or whoever else is living in the household with.
Yeah, that would dampen, you do fifty days prior to.
Exactly.
That period of time where it's not allowed.
Y'all must start pay half the year then, you know, really?
Yeah, half the year.
Yeah. But we could exclude ICAP people, right?
Um, exclude them in what way? Say that they, they're not eligible for this extension?
This extension.
I don't know about that.
So now, now the issue is if Aunt Janie needs, you know, she has oxygen tank in July, and she can't pay her bill, we exclude her. Because she's ICAP, I don't know, that's, I don't know, it's kinda, I can see where there'd be a whole mess there.
So we don't have to do the second ten day notice?
Right.
Right.
No, you guys can leave it as it is and say after thirty days, you're gonna give them, you're gonna give them a thirty day notice. And if they can't correct the delinquency in thirty days, you're just gonna turn off the power. You don't have to go through this process at all. It's just.
I think thirty days is fair. I mean, honestly, maybe I'm wrong on this, but you don't pay your bill and you have thirty days to pay it. I mean, they were talking ten days, right?
Whatever, their, their standard disconnection.
Is ten and ten.
Well, so a standard, so somebody in good health, hasn't paid their bill, uh, says at least three days in advance of the day disconnection is desired. So they sent out a notice and you gotta pay the bill, or it could be as short as, um, or it can't be shorter than three days. So, you know, they're, they're pretty tight for having flexibility.
I think thirty days is, I don't know, I think that's.
I hate to extend it to fifty.
Yeah, I, I think thirty days is more than fair, honestly. I mean, if I don't pay my bill now, I know I've got a thirty day grace period before they're gonna shut it off, so it gives me time to come up with that money, regardless if I, I mean, I don't, I don't need to go to the doctor or anything. I mean, I, that's a fact.
And granted, I mean, I've been doing this for, it's like, I'm not here, and this is the first time that this has come along, so, I mean, it's not like it's.
Habitual, right?
Right.
Just wanna leave it alone, just like thirty days and just go with the most bad until. We have to come up with a policy if it becomes a bring.
Julie, we don't really have a, for say, policy that we go thirty days, do we? It's just something you do.
But like I said, we're trying to buckle down, you know what I'm saying?
Well, doesn't it help if we have a policy that states that, so you don't have to, so you're not out there to win.
Yeah, we probably need a policy to, to designate that period of time, then if we don't have one already.
I mean, we just left you out there, kind of.
Well, and then like, from past, it's true, you said that on the, um, our bill, it just says the twen- after the twenty-fifth is dis- disconnection, that we didn't have to send out notices. That's another thing. If you wanna talk about it later.
Yeah.
So take this on as a private, for a, for a procession.
Well, maybe it's special, maybe a little procession.
Uh, Wayne County E D C, gonna have a chance to.
Brad, yeah, Brad called me. They had a really short meeting tonight, like fifteen minutes. And he said there really wasn't a whole lot, though he is gonna pass on the minutes to everybody, but you'll see that there's just really nothing going on that affects us all. The only thing is on May sixth is the E D C annual meeting, and town council members are invited to that. Uh, but you need to let Brad know if you want to go to that. So that is May sixth. If you want to attend the town council annual me- or E D C annual meeting, uh, you need to let Brad know, and he'll take care of that.
Uh, Swishing Cats, do you have Wayne County Chamber?
Didn't make the meeting, but I asked for the minutes. So, uh, I bet you can, uh, just, uh, guess what ninety percent of the minutes were on? The Eclipse. So I think they were just highlighting that, making sure that, uh, just kinda general overview of that and how the county's coming along and how the businesses are addressing that and, uh, so. And I did get a schedule of all their meetings and will now get them on my calendar, but I did ask for the minutes. But I didn't really just see anything that was blaring out there we need to know, other than, uh, the Eclipse is the main topic of that.
Parks and Recreation?
Uh, yes, um, so, uh, the Parks Superintendent Mike Beeson gave, uh, the, uh, yearly report in twenty twenty-three. Uh, new LED lights were installed throughout the park, uh, which was, uh, much needed, cause, uh, several lights were actually burned out. So, uh, I believe it only one or two that are left, um, to, to be installed. Uh, they also removed, uh, about forty stumps throughout the park. Most of them are in the wooded area behind, uh, the Little League Diamond. Uh, if you get a chance to go back there, it's night and day. I mean, there, it's, it's very, very nice now, it's, it's, uh, cleared out. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, uh, they did buy some new security cameras out there that they are working on installing. Um, the ones that, that we've, they've had in the past, I mean, they can never get working, so, uh, they've got some other cameras, um, to, to put out there. Uh, also towards the end of the year, depending on what funds they have left, uh, they are considering putting a new roof on Shelter Two. I guess the, the roof, the Shelter Two is in pretty bad shape. Um, and then the last thing is they, there is two members, um, that, uh, are vacated, or two positions are vacated with that board. So anybody that's interested that lives within the town, uh, that, um, are more than, uh, helpful to, to encourage to volunteer their time for that, so. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Yep.
Police Department?
The officer Fleming, she graduated from the academy, so we have her back now. Um, I, uh, most of you know, we had the semi versus the train, uh, crash several weeks back down by Auto Car. Um, the railroad is gonna be in town for meeting with me on the seventeenth to go over that particular crash. Um, so I plan to take them down to the tracks, so they can actually see the issue down there versus just hearing that they're gonna be in town from, uh, an office in Indianapolis. Um, I don't know, you know, if that's gonna do any good or not, but I am gonna take them down there and let them actually physically see, um, what some of the issues are down there with the two crossings there and the one also, um, over on South Street. So, uh, hopefully maybe that might, um, get something going on that. Um, there's a little dispute with them as far as, uh, the role the crossing played in that, so that's why they're coming to town. Um, I've been spending a lot of time just gearing up towards the Eclipse stuff like everybody else. Um, I've got as much staffing, uh, ready as I can. I had two, uh, reserves that took vacation from their regular jobs to be here to help out that weekend, so that, that will help, um, some with that. And, uh, the only other thing, I had all of our grant stuff that was out there is now in. We've got all of our radios are in, uh, the computer stuff is all in. Um, we've got everything installed in the cars. Um, one of the grants, the reimbursement, I believe we've already been reimbursed for, the town has. The other stuff, uh, we should be submitting here in the next week or so to get reimbursed for that now that we've got everything in and it's been paid for. We're just waiting on, uh, that stuff to clear, so we can send in for the proof of that to get ream- the reimbursement sent back. So we should have all the grants closed out, um, hopefully here within the next couple of weeks. And then, um, with that, uh, I was gonna ask, um, if possible, through ARPA for another, uh, little over fourteen hundred dollars, um, that's additional cost that come with the radio stuff that was not additionally foreseen that. Um, and with that is, uh, I had to spend, uh, hundred and sixteen dollars ninety-seven cents on mounts that was required to mount the mobile, the new mobile radios into the cars. It required a different mount because it was a new, um, type of radio, cost nine hundred dollars to get the new radios mounted into the cars. Um, and then, uh, for the portables, um, we ordered to replace the antennas on. They come with the real long antennas, um, which are kind of, uh, difficult when the guys wear them on the vest. They stick up pretty high. So we ordered what they call the stubby antennas, um, to replace that, um, which was, um, three hundred and thirty-two seventy. And then one, um, mic charger to keep in the squad room. Full-time officers have, uh, Bluetooth, um, rechargeable, uh, mics. Um, the portal that came that they're issued, they have one for home for when they charge it. Um, but we don't have anything available, uh, here at, at the P D if one was to go dead. We have the ability to charge the radio because the spare radios, we can use those chargers, but the spare radios don't have the wireless mics. So I ordered one, um, charger for the mics to keep in there, um, and that was eighty-nine seventy. So if possible, if, um, I could pay for these with that fund, um, it was one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. To pay for that, and then that, uh, will finish out all the radio stuff. Um, we are, I'm ready for the, the changeover, um, when the county does that. Um, at the last meeting we had on that, we're kinda waiting till all the Eclipse stuff's over, just cause there's gonna be multiple possibility of different agencies and stuff involved, so they're kinda just waiting on that to settle down before we, we switch over. But, uh, that should happen within the next several months, and as soon as that does, uh, we're, we're ready to go now with all our radio systems. Like I said, the new computers are, are in, they're all installed in the vehicles and, um, everything's in and ready. So that's, uh, the only thing that I had, unless you guys have some questions for me.
What do we need to do to pay that out of the ARPA money?
Yeah.
We need a motion to move money or?
Yep.
Is there money, I'm assuming, still?
One hundred and eighty.
Yeah, well, I'll move that we pay for them, whatever happens. This was fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents.
I will second that.
So we're properly moved and seconded, we paid for the radio equipment for the police department for ARPA funds in the amount of one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. She's on that, if that saves your equipment budget is what you're saying, trying to do?
Correct, that way, yes, correct, correct, cause all the radios, all that equipment.
You just wanna replace that.
Correct, all the, all the radio equipment stuff was bought from outside of, yes, so it was not in the original, correct.
Kinda like unforeseen circumstances.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, and a couple of items, we weren't allowed, um, we couldn't put those expenses into the grant, like installation, that type of stuff, so, yes.
All right, Mark. Um, our grant for, well, you have my report. One thing I left out was our runs. Our runs were down compared to this time last month, so that was a big plus. Our A F G grant has been submitted for, for new radios. We, uh, the rider fee, uh, the township pitched in, and they're gonna pay half that fee. Um, if the grant is successful, then we'll get reimbursed half of that cost back for what it cost to write that grant. The, the grant application's closed. It'll be a few months before they start reviewing everything and awarding grants. I wouldn't, sometime maybe midsummer before they start awarding these grants out. It's a very competitive grant. There's thousands of fire departments across country applying for this grant. I do know that, uh, next year's grant, the funding was cut by the federal government, so, um, I don't know if we'll apply again. It's dependent on what we need, so, um. Other station, um, some of the repairs we've had made, uh, have been completed. And it goes like, come in over two thousand dollars under what it was originally quoted for the repairs that we had in there, so. And we still do need to make some more of the restroom over there. That's what we're working on right now. Added, uh, LED lights to, uh, Engine Six-One, they're telescopic lights, uh, made a big, more of a difference for these lights, a lot brighter. We plan on doing that to, uh, Engine Six-Six, so, um, get that done. Uh, still down two members, still looking to, um, bring it, try to get our guys back up to shape, or our, our membership back up to where it used to be. And we plan for the Eclipse and we're ready for whatever happens, I reckon, so if people show up, they show up, but I think we'll, I think we'll be fine, so.
To beat the, uh, dead horse, has there been any discussion with the, uh, township on equipment and all that stuff that we've been kicking down the curtain?
Yeah, I've met with Chris a couple of times. We, we discussed a few things, and as of now, I think his, we're kinda leaving everything the same, the way it is. Um, there's still just some discussion on what might happen down the road, but as of now, it's gonna stay the same.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Airport order?
Uh, gonna be a long winded tonight. Uh, John, sorry I dropped the ball on that.
It's all right. Give me three under the bus.
No, I was, I was gonna bring it up, but, uh, yeah, so we finally have a, an agreement. As long as we get that name changed, we're good. Um, Alicia was happy with it. I've met with Jeff a couple of times. He's already started to make repairs out there, so we're pretty happy with that, too. Um, we've gotten the U V system for the water installed, so we have drinkable water out there now, finally. Um, for the Eclipse, a couple of things. I've had about fifty calls over the last two weeks of people wanting to fly in. So hopefully we'll have a good turnout as long as the weather's decent. Um, Gary, can you get me the, uh, contact information for the fireworks guys?
Mm-hmm.
That'd be great. That way we can coordinate with them. And, let's see what else. Um, the last thing is the biggest thing, really. Um, we've sold our old tractor and the motor deck. We made, uh, eighty-five hundred dollars, I think it was from that. Nope, sixty-four fifty, sixty-four fifty. Apparently that money goes back into the general fund. I'd like to request that it be. Apparently that money goes back into the general fund. I'd like to request that it be reallocated back to the airport.
Well, we have, the next meeting, we have to do additional preparation for the $6,450 so then make the pickup of the tractor, these are budgets.
Still have the reports, then?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Any other questions, Mike?
Yes.
Some, some still. The $1 that they owe you for these, do we owe you or do we owe the town?
It'll go to the town. It goes into the fund or whatever. So you just pay them like you would a water bill or anything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Advisory Plan Commission?
Yes, we had a meeting. We spent a lot of time, we received a resignation, Terry. We got a really good offer from Centerville and feel that to be their building commissioner. And we're very happy for him. They made an excellent offer to him that we didn't see any way in the world that we could get around. Centerville has graciously given us kind of a 30, 90-day grace period. If we need some help for Terry to kind of clean up some of the things he was working on, they're gonna work with us on that. So we're appreciative of that as well. So then we had a discussion, what are we gonna do? We found out, and Terry had a lot of comments or suggestions and Chris. There's kind of a big learning curve to get somebody ready for this, and so that makes it difficult. So, you know, you have a couple of options. You go out and try to find somebody to replace him and start that learning curve. Or, you know, you look at your, another option, and we talked about this before we heard Terry, is that we can turn that over to the county to take care of the permits. And Chris, I think they're, they only do the commercials, right?
Yeah, it's a state building inspector that only does the commercial projects. So we're still having to issue the local permits. And as of right now, Terry's still having to inspect them. We're trying to issue them here at the front window. But so we're running out of time on that one.
So, so we're still working through that, but, and we're, we have a couple of ideas maybe how to address that. But, and the reason we're looking at a bridge there is we have an individual that has expressed that when he retires, which he's in a couple of years, maybe three at the most, he would be very interested in that position and he's very qualified. He would not need any training and he would be qualified to take that over. So we're trying to figure out, are we better off to figure out how to bridge this and get to that individual who is very interested in it? And-
Come here. Have that. Three years is a long time. Life happens, man.
Yep, that's what I was thinking, too.
So that's what we're looking from council. What do you want us to do? Do you want us to go out and try to find somebody and start the training process or?
We felt lucky to get this guy.
I know. And he, and I'm just gonna say, he did a phenomenal job, was doing a phenomenal job.
And eye contact in Centerville, tried to get him to split in 50/50 with us and they wouldn't do it, so I tried.
We tried everything we could do.
So I, I think that leads us to a point where we, we need to change our process or what we're doing. Because if we're gonna keep doing this, we're gonna, we're gonna get a qualified person like Terry and somebody's gonna make an offer somewhere else, we need to relook at what we're doing.
Yep.
Because if we don't, and we're still doing the same thing over and over again, then we're gonna end up with another good qualified person, whether it's three years from now or whatever. So we have to look at this at a different approach. You know, we're gonna have to either find a way to combine this, make it a nice full-time job, assign duties to it. And I, and I know that's like adding an employee and add stuff to the town. But if we want this luxury of having a building inspector in our town that works with us under our oversight, if we want that, then we're gonna pay for it. I mean, that's how I'm looking at it. But when we're trying this right now, if you don't, if we don't try a different approach, we're gonna have the same thing. We're gonna have another guy like Terry to come in who's gonna be qualified. It's gonna be gone. Now, I have no idea what they're offering you. They may offer you the moon. We may not have been able to match that. That's fine. It's your business. I support whatever you did with that. It's just, we just can't keep throwing this out here. You know, either we're gonna do it or we're gonna pass it off to the county, I guess. I don't know. I hate to pass it off to the county.
Well, the county's not 100% because they, they-
So it's almost to a point then that we're gonna have to do something.
Yep, I agree.
Now, there's some other towns that's stuck in the same position that we're in. So one of our other ideas, do we reach out? Do we see if they have some funds and try to make this a larger responsibility and try to bring in more funds? I think, I think council understand that it was never a money-making business anyhow. I mean, it was, our permits never cover the cost. It's just how much. But it's, if we want our buildings inspected, we're gonna have to figure out something. So planning, Advisory Plan Commission talked about it pretty extensively. They're looking for some direction. Do you want us to reach out to some of the other communities that struggle with the same thing we are? Do you just want us to go out and try to find another person, part-time? Do you want us to try to bridge it? And that's not, like Chris said, it's not a perfect deal. They don't wanna do the residential. We still have the flood plane that we have to address. So there's a lot of, of gap there.
And they're probably closer to two years until, until retirement now because, you know, we spent a year trying to get Terry. So yeah, I mean, you know, we're-
So, and we can reach out with that person and see if there's, if they're, move that up or not. I'm not gonna say a name, but he would be extraordinarily qualified.
I was gonna affect this, though. I mean, I, I foresee one or two zoning issues coming up in the next few months. So how's this gonna, is county gonna come in and step in and do all the helping with the zoning?
That's the problem. We don't have, there's no one.
When these people ask me about zoning, I'm gonna say, just out of luck, guys, you just have to eat what you're gonna eat. But you're, because you're gonna get no help.
The plan, the building commissioner basically called the BCA meetings, had to get all the material together, called the meetings. But it's my understanding, once the BCA received all that material, it was really up to the discretion of the BCA to give a variance or not. I mean, we're not gonna change the zone, we're not changing the zoning.
But the building commissioner calls, he, he gives us all that information. He sets the meeting at our request. Oh, yeah.
The BCA sets the meeting, the commissioner does the investigation, the BCA is the board, they set the meeting.
That's not the way it worked.
Yeah, but this is the way, probably, it probably wasn't done the way it was, the guidelines stayed, how the guidelines actually stayed, that we're probably gonna go forward trying to do that. So that was probably a courtesy that Bob did, which was wonderful. But, you know, the BCA will probably have to step up and do more. And, and we're, we're looking at the BCA, too, as, as those guidelines look to. Terry's brought some of that to our attention as well. So, yeah, Ricket.
Well, I got three members. Still don't have anybody outside the two of my friends. I've got a guy in mind that I've been talking to, but-
Volunteering is getting tough.
You know, possibly we can hire a consultant to help us with the zoning part of it. And possibly the person wants to be the, or that could be the building inspector of two years. Maybe he could help us with some of the consulting. I don't know. I don't know if he'd wanna take it on, but it might be an option.
We're, we're just letting you know where we're at and that we're trying to evaluate what we can do. If you want us to look at a full-time person, we'll try to get back to you what that entails.
Well, I think before we do that, I hate to kick the can down the road, but I think as a, as a council, we're planning to determine what that position will look like before we go to you and say, yeah, let's find someone to fill this position. So, I mean, again-
Are you wanting to add more to it?
Well, I think, you know, having, you know, a special meeting or whatever we have to sit down and try to figure out what we want to do with that particular position and build a job description off of that. And then that way we can give that to you and take that to the, the planning commissioner. I mean, I think that would be-
Be, be very well appreciated, I'm sure.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's do, our next special meeting, it'll take four days to do because we keep adding stuff to it. But a, a special meeting, maybe we look at the future of that position and what we want it to look like. Because I, I agree. I think if we're at a point where, you know, we had someone that was doing a fantastic job, was on top of things, and kudos to him getting another position somewhere else, I think we're running the same problem. We're gonna, we could train somebody up and they could go away. Or we're waiting two years and then we got other issues coming up like Ricket's mentioned there. So I, I think, I think we gotta give you guys guidance on what that position needs to look like.
Okay, we'll look for that, our special meeting. Then the only other thing we somewhat talked about was the sign. And if you've been out on the east side of town, you can see that that is currently constructed. Sadly to say, the electronics parts of it isn't. Our hope was by the eclipse day, but that's not gonna happen. The electronics people just could not get that completed. So, but it is in the process. So that was the two main topics. The third topic a little bit was, and it was mentioned here, we are going to maybe revisit the comprehensive plan and bring that up a little bit more to date. And you heard that that's gonna be a part, you know, of that as well. So we'll start getting a little bit more involved in that. And we're full. I think we have, all our members were full, so that's good. That's all I have.
Chris? Well, I think everyone else has pretty much discussed all my bullet points except about two that are on my list here. So Streets Department, the community crossings grant, paving project will take place this spring. Milestone is doing that against Polk, the entire Polk, um, stretch, North Market Street in front of the cemetery and a section of South Elm Street. And there are also a couple of repairs where we had some drainage issues that they're working on as well. Only other thing down lower, we're having a meeting with my utility employees tomorrow to finalize our plans for preparing for the solar eclipse this weekend. This will be, we've already had a couple of meetings. But I think we have everything under control. You guys have any questions about anything else that's on there?
How did the Now I'm in Hagerstown broadcast go?
I think it went phenomenally well. Yeah, Thursday night it went really well. And had several of the people from PBS up at Ball State compliment our community and said that they were, well, we had one or two that said that they felt like we're the best community to work with so far, which I was really proud of that, that everyone seemed to have a real passion for the topic they were discussing on the show. And I think it went really well.
At this work session or a special meeting that, again, will now be five days long, it might be good to get Valerie involved with-
Correct, Valerie did want us to be, or wanted to be invited to our next special session, so you said, correct.
Yeah, I think that blighted-
We'll set a date and see if she's available.
Yep.
Chris, when Synergy cuts a sidewalk, puts a new gas line in, do they come back and put concrete in that instead of gravel?
Correct. Is there a place where they've not gotten that?
Well, it's just, is that sidewalk going to the park?
They cut that?
They cut that.
In front of your place, I think.
I needed a gas line and they cut it, but it's on the county side.
Okay, okay.
But, I mean, that's, I don't know, whose jurisdiction is that sidewalk? Is that ours or?
We actually own the property, so it is ours. Although it's in the county, we own the property. So I will contact, I do have a couple of contacts with Synergy that I can contact on that.
I mean, it's been a couple of months ago it's done.
Is it in the, is it in the part where you drive over or is it, it's an actual sidewalk part?
Yeah.
I haven't, I haven't noticed it. Okay.
I looked that way yesterday.
Okay, we're gonna learn.
So that, okay, you guys, Town Hagerstown owns all that property?
We own it just as property, but it is in the county, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. We actually had to buy, you know, like the eight-foot slither, yeah, along the road. It's that property that we own out there. They actually bought an eight-foot section of that property.
I know, I had to deal with two different deeds.
You did, didn't you? Because you had one in the town and one in the county.
But now the town has it all.
Correct, yep.
Terry, do you have a report for us?
Actually, you know what, guys? I had a report prepared, and I hate to admit this, but I don't know where it is. I'm sorry.
Left one of your desk in service.
It is on my computer, but I don't have my computer.
It's in your drafts in your email.
It's gonna be a busy spring here, guys. We put out 14 permits just in March. Eight inspections actually, well, I guess this is April, so you can't count that. The gentleman with the gun shop was supposed to have applied for the BCA meeting. That never happened. I haven't heard from him yet. Could still happen, but I don't know that, I haven't had contacted. That kind of got dropped. The IGA, Cold Deep signed, he goes by Bob. He actually got all of the legal paperwork. Right here's his permit. State's approved the load. The trust drawings have been submitted. He's gonna put a new roof on the IGA. It's legal and we can't stop him. So here's this, which that's good for the community to have a grocery store. He also is supposed to allow the Wayne County Health Department, myself and the Fire Marshal Inn to do a final inspection before he opens to the public. So all of that has fallen into place. He's cooperated. The first thing I really wanna say is kind of important is I can't tell you how much I appreciate what you've done for me. My intention when I accepted this job was never for this to happen. This was not something I planned or something I'm indicative about. And with due respect, I'd like to talk to you when there's not a camera, right? Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Julie?
Just have the auditors, they came February 28th. And they're not physically here, but they're still waiting for our exit interview. So I think they've got all their information just waiting on the exit interview. And that will be one of you in the, but just waiting on that.
Our next regular council meeting will be Monday, May 6th at 6:30 PM. Everybody have a chance to declare the claims?
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We approve the claims as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?